...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Today is February 12th, 2018, Capitol Conference.
Basil, Meyer, here. Kraus?
Here.
Mazur? Here. Kapurst?
Here.
Whalen?
Here.
We have the minutes from January 22nd. Any changes? Now is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions or motion? Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mazur?
Yes.
Kapurst?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Thirty-one from the audience, first to the press board. Now I have the Village Commission's, Pidification Commission, buddy.
We're just going through the process of deciding which pots to probably replace along with ordering of the flowers. It's mid-March. I got a meeting Wednesday with Mrs. Boltima to compare prices and I will have a report at the next meeting, I would believe. I'll learn that this is all I have.
Fourth of July Commission, Commissioner.
We have a potential commissioner to replace Ray Smith for Bingo Stand Committee. His name is Brad Johnson. So I would like to make a motion, or do I have to make a motion for that? Yeah, appointing Brad Johnson before he changes his mind.
He's supporting my appointment, so that...
Okay. Supporting the mayor's appointment of Brad Johnson for a Fourth of July commission.
Is the motion made? Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, just to make a point. If you recall, now Mr. Smith passed away.
And this is your appointment, correct? This would be my appointment.
Roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Kapurst?
Yes.
Mazur?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Consider a motion authorizing the letting of bids for the Fourth of July raffle car. The bid specs and bid schedule were in your package, so I would like to make a motion authorizing the letting of bids for the Fourth of July raffle car.
A motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions or motion? Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mazur?
Yes.
Kapurst?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
That's it.
That's it.
You the Commission Trustee, Mazur?
Okay, alls I have is that this Saturday is the Father Daughter Dance. We have 200 attendees registered, so it looks like it's gonna be a really good event. The Mother-Son Dance is in April. The next two meetings, we're gonna be setting up our calendar events for this year. And we are looking for one more commissioner and we are gonna put out a push for volunteers. That's all I have.
The historic preservation, trustee Lynn.
Our next meeting is next Wednesday at 6:00 PM. That's all I have.
And Frank.
There's nothing on the grid in the hall.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sorry.
That's all.
And you're still up?
Treasury report, Donald.
The total of the village accounts, $2,028,917.71. The total of the commission accounts, $191,160.96. The total of all combined, $2,220,78.67. Total in general was $737,778.43. The commission bills, the non-AP payments, total $202,305.21. Nothing out of the ordinary on there. You will start seeing, under the joint fuel, that there are two payments. The joint fuel committee decided to start reimbursing the village for $300 for my salary for the time that I work on it during the month. And a reimbursement check of $100 a month to Washington Township for their internet and electric. Other than that, everything's normal.
Any questions? If not, I'd like to make the motion approving the Treasury report, financial activities for the prior month.
Second.
Motion made. Any second or any questions or motion? Roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Kapurst?
Yes.
Mazur?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Variance reports for the preceding month are enclosed for your review. Any questions or concerns? Approval of the bills for the prior month? Anyone who got a chance to look them over?
I think we only had four, we only had four or five.
Yeah, there's only a couple of them that are highlighted. Any questions on bills?
The puddle scales, Lieutenant. Have we used them yet?
I think they've used them twice. We're in the down season, so...
I understand the snow. I don't expect the officers to be out there in the snow waiting for truck, but I just wanna make sure for calculating them that they're being used.
No, they're coming up March 31st, April 1st will be the portion plates. Everything on April 1st midnight flips back over. If they're not registered, they're zero pounds, so that'll start the summer and the fall season.
And how many vests did out of 220 pages?
Three vests for fifteen of officers this year.
Were those replacements or...
They are...
Are they replacing old ones or...
Pardon me?
Were they replacing older ones, outdated ones?
Yes, they are. We gotta find your cycle.
Any other questions, Mr.? If not, I'd like to make a motion approving the bills for the prior month, $1,001, I'm sorry, $111,369.3.
Motion number four. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions or motion? Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mazur?
Yes.
Kapurst?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
And that ends my report.
Thank you, trustee Mazur.
Consider a letter of no objection to Will County for special use permit for a solar farm located within 1.5 miles of the village limits. For go solar system, seventeen acres on both sides of Indiana Avenue between Cottage Grove and Stony Island Avenue. The petitioners will make a presentation on the proposed solar farm and explain all of the enclosed documents. The petition appears to satisfy all of the requirements of our new ordinance, even though this will be an unincorporated facility. The village has the right to object to the project if it chooses to do so, since the special use permit request to the county is within 1.5 miles of the village limits. It is not contagious, however, and objection triggers a three-fourth vote of the county board to approve instead of a simple majority. After hearing the presentation and deliberation, the PZC voted unanimously to recommend a letter of no objection. A draft of such letter is enclosed.
Matt Walsh and Mel Brago are here to make the presentation. Just to give you a little hindsight here, this has been televised for cable and YouTube, so you are going to be... But if you can focus on the TV screen while they do their thing. This is for the public's benefit, so they know what's going on.
Sure.
I'm Matt Walsh. I'm with Greenberg Farah. We're engineers and designers helping per make and title these projects. This is Mel Samaru. Who's with Borrego Solar, just please.
Okay, so yeah, it's Matt Sun, Mel Samaru with Borrego. Home of Solar Chain for the group. A little bit of the background behind Borrego is we've been around for, since 1980s, you can see on the screen. We have offices in California, New York, Massachusetts, and now Illinois. We're one of the largest solar developers in the New York and Massachusetts markets. So we specifically try to concentrate on the types of products that we're here presenting to you tonight, which I'll let Matt get into in a little bit. And a little bit of background on why we're in Illinois is that the state is drafting and in the process of passing legislation that provides incentives that makes developers wanna build solar in the state. This project, these projects specifically are community solar types of projects, so what that means is that anyone that has a comment bill can subscribe to the project and get anywhere from 10% to 15% savings on their electricity bill. And so we try to market it to people with the comment bills and they have savings and it can have subscribers of anywhere from three to 1,000 people. And so I'll let Matt kind of go through each of the projects.
So I should start by saying that these are actually two separate projects. One's on the north side of Indiana Avenue, one's on the south side, right near the corner of Indiana Avenue and Cottage Grove Avenue. So we've done a lot of community outreach with these projects and just to give you a brief overview of who we've met with. We've met with Washington Township twice. We've been through their board last week, the 5th of February, received board approval with a couple of conditions. Their approval is more of a recommendation to the county board, so the county board will ultimately be the deciding body on these projects. We were here, like Mr. Barber had presented, for the plan commission, which we received unanimous approval for. We've also been in discussions with the Beecher Fire Protection District. They reviewed the project, provided comments and a support letter. And we've met with Will County on an informal basis with their staff and after we get, hopefully, support from this board, we will move on to the county. As far as the components of the project, I'll quickly run through both sites separately, but they're mirror images of one another on opposite sides of Indiana Avenue. These are conveyor tracker systems, so they rotate with the sun very slowly as the sun comes up and then they follow the sun through the sky to maximize the solar gain. These panels are placed on top of a racking system, which is similar to, like a fence post that's driven or screwed or augured into the ground. There's no concrete at this point that's associated with any of the foundations, so they're just drilled into the ground. They can be easily moved when the project's decommissioned. These panels are maximum seven feet tall, so when they're at their maximum angle, seven feet, and then when they rotate with the sun, the actual height is actually lower because as they rotate, they become parallel with the ground. They have an anti-reflective coating on them, so hopefully that reduces any glare. We've corresponded with the FAA and they have no objection to these projects. In discussion with the Fire Protection District, they've asked that the driveway be 18 feet wide to allow for their equipment and proper access, which we will accommodate. At the end of the driveway, as you can see in the gray there, there's a transformer pad, an inverter. Coming from there, there's several poles that lead to existing power lines that are running along Indiana Avenue, so the electricity that's generated by the panels that are represented in blue will be transmitted through the transformer and then ultimately along the poles, which connect to existing ComEd infrastructure. Along the perimeter of the system, on the outside of that green box, there's a seven-foot chain link fence. There's no barbed wire associated with it, just a galvanized chain link. As far as grading goes and drainage, we've done a lot of analysis on the project. We've located all of the existing drain tiles. The crops that are planted below these panels will be a meadow mix, so that is actually less runoff generated than existing row crops that are out there. So it improves the drainage situation, that a more dense ground cover helps control erosion better than the existing condition and helps reduce runoff. Let's see. This particular project on the north side, it's a 72-acre parcel. The project proposes to utilize 17 acres for the solar system. Couple of things, and this is for both projects. I'll run through the other one quickly, but we've submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers for a letter of no objection. We're not disturbing any wetlands that are in the area, so we're expecting that as soon as the Corps has a chance to review our application. We've been to the IDNR. There's no issues with threatened endangered species. We've received a termination letter from that group. We've also been to IHPA for clearance on historic or archaeological features on the site, which we received a letter of no objection. And then we've also done drain tile analysis where they've all been mapped and we'll try to avoid the drain tiles as best we can. If any are disturbed during construction, they'll be replaced or worked around. As far as setbacks go, we're exceeding all the setbacks that are required by the county. The front yard setback is 100 feet, which is represented by the dashed line around the perimeter. So we're right past 100 feet on the front yard and on the side yards, we're in far in excess of the setback requirements. We've also had a lease and NRI completed for these projects. It was found that this land is considered high-quality farmland. However, these systems are temporary in nature. The leases are 20-year periods with a couple of extension options, but the systems are completely removable. There's very little concrete associated with them, other than the transformer pad. And there is a decommissioning plan in place that will be vetted by the county to ensure that there's suitable requirements for removal at the end of the term. And then just to give you a little idea about the farmland, the 2012 USDA Census of Agriculture, there was a little over 230,000 acres of farmland. This potential project, both these potential projects, wouldn't even take out a hundredth of 1% of farmland, so it's very minimal amount of loss of productivity in the county. So this project is just on the south side, directly across the street. And it has the same requirements, driveway that meets the fire department's request. It's a 2-megawatt system, just like on the north. Transformer and inverter in the center of the site at the end of the driveway. I guess a little bit about the noise, too. The loudest piece of equipment out there is the transformer inverter. And we've done analysis at the property lines. They're almost not audible. They're equal to what the ambient noise is out there currently. Construction timeframe for these projects. So these are frequently asked questions. It's four to six months. There's, usually there's two to three trucks per day with a maximum load of 80,000 pounds, which is a semi, just a typical semi. As far as maintenance goes, these projects are remotely operated, so there's not staff on site all the time that's monitoring these projects. There's visits three to four times a year to inspect the equipment and then one to two times a year for mowing of the actual plants that are out there to make sure that they don't grow up above the panels and shade them at all. Some of the benefits are that there's no pesticides or herbicides associated with these projects, so hopefully, long-term, over a 20-year period, once we return back to farmland, it's actually more productive than it currently is. Decommissioning, we briefly already went over this. The systems are removable. They're addressed in the lease agreement with the landowner. And there's salvage estimate that was provided to the county, basically showing that the system is valuable enough that when it's at the end of its life, there's enough value there that if the developer were to walk away, that there's value in the system. As far as impacts go, we also mentioned the transformer inverter. Really, the only noise during the whole process is during construction. And then obviously, like Mel had said, there's subscriber savings that ComEd customers can sign up for. And then there's little to no impact on county or local utilities and services, so you know, there's no schools that'll be impacted by this, the roads, other than the initial construction. Very little impact, however, the tax benefits associated with these are pretty significant and the local communities will benefit from them.
And then just some other project benefits. Like Matt said, the tax revenue, local job simulation will, for the maintenance crews, will try to find someone local out here to do all of that. And then the environmental benefits, I won't run through them all, but just some offsets that you, we have from EPA of what these two to megawatt projects, well, this is for one to megawatt projects.
Yeah, so each one will generate these benefits.
Any questions?
Yeah, so if there's any questions...
Are you gonna go right into the high-tension wires there? Is that what, isn't there a high tension in it?
There is. Those are transmission lines, which we will not be tying into. We'll be tying into the three-phase distribution lines that are along the street.
So you're producing four megawatts between the plants, is that correct?
Well, they're considered two separate projects, so it's two 2-megawatt projects.
Okay, but...
There'll be four megawatts total produced between the two of them.
Right. It's my understanding that there are limitations as to what the grid can accept. So you might be one of the few solar farms that would actually locate in our area because the grid can only take so much. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, that the existing ComEd infrastructure can only, each circuit can only handle so much power that's contributed to it, so...
Do you ever sign off on ComEd on this project?
We're in the process of working with them, just to see what the interconnection agreement will be. But to also answer your question, there is a limit on how many megawatts can be on each parcel. So each parcel is, like Matt said, 79 acres. The limit of how many megawatts of solar can be on that parcel are 2 megawatts, so these products will not get any bigger than they are proposing.
In your lease agreement, it says that the tear down of the equipment is covered in the lease agreement. Is there a security deposit you have to provide for lessor for the removal of the equipment? Or how is that handled in the lease agreement? Do you wanna explain that a little more? The reason I'm asking is the county's gonna get more into the devil of the details.
Absolutely. So as far as the lease agreement goes, there's the legal obligation to obviously remove it as per the contract, which is the lease. But there's also a salvage value, so that would help offset any costs associated with removal. But obviously, at the county level, there's still discussions on how any bonding requirements would be addressed, so it's not completely clear on what the county's expectations are, but we're working to...
But the lessor is comfortable with this arrangement?
Yes, most, all lessors have legal counsel that they'll evaluate the lease before they sign it.
You mentioned lifespan. What is the lifespan of a project like this?
So the initial lease agreement is 20 years with four or five-year options to extend, and the lifetime of the panels are within that range.
Does these tariffs that you're talking about on foreign panels go to affect the project? I know that was asked the PZC as well. Someone asked that, so I ask it here, just so everyone hears the same thing. Do you have that covered in your formula, these new tariffs?
Yeah, we're accounting for it and dealing with it as, on a project-by-project basis.
Has there been any objections from any of the government's over, agency, if you're just hoping to?
No, we've done a lot of outreach and we've been to many communities, particularly in Will County, that everyone's really excited about these. I think particularly the tax benefits is very attractive to a lot of communities, but also having green energy in your backyard is also something that is nice for a lot of communities to be able to tout.
So it's tax benefits that the village gets?
Well, we're not, yeah, we're not in...
The other taxing bodies will benefit from this.
Just out of curiosity, so when the panels are facing the sun, they're gonna be more, maybe not vertical, but, and then they're gonna turn. How much, I know they have anti-glare coating on them, how much glare is produced by that? Is that something that's gonna be a kind of a blast coming at, you know, people in a certain direction or...
Well, the intent is to absorb as much light as possible, obviously, to produce energy, so hopefully, that is...
Not a lot of reflection.
Not a lot of reflection, but on the same note, you know, these are surrounded by farm fields, so you know, once the corn gets a little bit higher, there's hopefully gonna be some screening associated with the crops, but they're also not really near any residential either, so...
What were the stipulations supposed, you said Washington Township had stipulations?
Yeah, so they had two, and they weren't specific, but they were that they asked the county to take a close look at stormwater management, which is something we've been working closely with the county on. And then the second is appropriate landscape. So we've had landscape architects on the project that are evaluating our seed mix and making sure we have proper germination and plant material that's right for this application.
I think one of the concerns was the channel fence around the project. They thought it could be ugly, but at the same time, you have to provide security. You can't let kids play in the panels. So I don't know how to bridge the security needs with the aesthetic value of this 72-acre fenced area.
I mean, I guess one of the main things is, one of the projects that's constructed right now, which isn't a Borrego project, but there's one near Streeter, Illinois, that's Grand Bridge. You know, having colleagues that have visited it, my understanding is you don't really even know that it's there until you actually like ride up on top of it when you drive there. So it's not something that you can see in the distance and really, they're low-profile systems that aren't that objectionable to view, so I think this is a great site. Borrego does a lot of due diligence in trying to pick appropriate locations that aren't inside of a city or next to someone's house.
Anything come up with PZC, Stacy, with this?
Nothing really. Kind of the same questions were asked. I did ask, and I'll just ask it again, so everybody here can hear, as well as the public. I asked if this would have any impact if we had a power outage that would help, and the response was...
Likely no, because the systems are set up that if there was a power outage, the system would also shut down as well, just to protect the grid and the asset, the solar farm.
It really didn't seem to have much of an impact on us as the village and all the other taxing bodies kind of are in agreeance with it, as well as there are benefits as far as what tax revenue will come in from this for our communities, so we kind of felt that it was something we approved.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, besides being within one and a half miles of our eligible, it doesn't have any taxes really.
Quick to make a motion.
Sure. So I would like to make a motion to consider a letter of no objection to Will County for special use permit for the solar farm located within 1.5 miles of the village limits to Borrego Solar Systems for 17 acres on both sides of Indiana Avenue between Cottage Grove and Stony Island Avenue.
If I may, rather than consider, authorize a letter of no objection. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions or motion? Roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Kapurst?
Yes.
Kapurst?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
I'll nail those two more.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want two letters, the one for each side?
Correct.
Please.
First to page.
Consider a motion authorizing a special village board meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, March 5th, for the purpose of reviewing the proposed village budget. The finance committee has decided to request a special village board meeting to hold a workshop on the proposed budget. This will allow the entire village board to go through the budget line by line with the finance committee in an effort to ensure that all funds are balanced and in good order going into the next fiscal year. March 26 regular village board meeting will then be used as a brief village budget update on the impact of changes made to the budget by the village board, and the hearing will still be held on April 24th.
Is the committee still gonna meet on their own ahead of time, previous to this?
No.
Okay, you're not gonna do the Saturday?
We're just gonna do it all, yeah, all together, village board.
Should've missed you my breakfast.
Yep. You could bring dinner and breakfast for dinner.
Dinner instead. Okay, you wanna hors d'oeuvres? Would you care if you wanted breakfast for dinner? I'd like to make a motion, right?
Yep. Consider a motion, or I'd like to make a motion authorizing a special village board meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, March 5th, for the purpose of reviewing the proposed village budget.
Motion on the floor, there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions or motion? Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Cuthbert?
Yes.
Wayman?
Yes.
All right, uh, consider a resolution adopting the five-year financial plan for the Village of Beecher for twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. We have, uh, we have to approve this resolution tonight, but can't have any discussion on, we don't have to approve the resolution tonight. The resolution tonight, sorry. But we can have a discussion on the plan. The finance committee did meet to review the plan and is comfortable with it. Uh, we are scheduled to vote on the plan at the February twenty-six meeting, but wanted to place it on the agenda to answer any questions or concerns regarding the document. Any questions or concerns?
It's a plan, it's not a budget.
Right, it's a plan. All right, though.
Well, we do need it for our bond reading, that's a very important component of that.
Okay, I I had a few, I mean, I brought them up in our committee meeting, and they're reflective, but, I mean, I think we should go over it a little bit and let them know where we're at with the water and sewer funds especially. We we did make some changes in the water and sewer funds.
Where we at, John?
Uh, it'd be Fund Fifty-One, we'll start at Fifty-One. Which is, it's not aligned, but.
What comes to a negative twenty?
Bob, do you have another?
Those were twenty to fifty-one? Change one of them?
One of them.
So you'll see in there that the the revenues over expenses, they get very tight. Seventeen eighteen, it's it's at zero, slowly creeps up a little bit. Um, again, that's what I brought up before, hopefully we're able to get some things in line and make adjustments as to, um, what employees are paid out of what funds, and that will make a big difference here. Um, again, you know, and it's something that'll come up later in this meeting with water main plans. Um, you'll see in here what the water main replacement in the revenue section. Um, three, seven, two, what that brings in as far as revenue annually. Um, and we'll talk more about that later if we're willing to, um, think about increasing that or what. Um, that that's strictly with the water fund replacement account. But this shows, especially sewer, it's it's tight. These funds should be a little more healthy than, in my opinion, the the revenue should be there and and a little higher over the expenses than what they are. Um, there, we did a lot of juggling and some assumptions, Bob, you wanna?
Yeah, if you notice in the five year.
Because last year, yeah, I mean, last year in the five year, we showed it basically going, water was basically at that fifth year, looking at going into the red and then sewer the same.
Water, water's looking a little better, the sewer fund is not performing well, and and the problem you have is operating processes, the plant are going to affect, uh, this in the nineteen-twenty fiscal year. In the eighteen-nineteen year, um, you'll be receiving a copy of the proposed budget at the next board meeting, which shows both water and sewer, actually running an operating surplus, because these planning numbers aren't as tight as when we get to the actual budget.
Mm-hmm.
But the nineteen-twenty year is when we start having problems meeting the new operating demands of the new sewer fund. And the committee discussed using some utility tax money, which is a general revenue, pay it out of debt, because right now the the payments into debt may exceed what what we need and use that to cover some of the operating deficits in the sewer fund, thereby no rate increase to revenue. And the utility tax revenue is a general revenue that can be used at any discretion or purpose the boards desire. There's no restrictions on that revenue source.
So, I mean, with the water, it's, like I said, it's not that much, but you can see that, in in my opinion, there should be a little higher difference in the revenue to water main. And then when you get to Fund Fifty-Two, it's exactly what Bob's talking about. When you look exactly at seventeen-eighteen, I mean, these are dollar-for-dollar revenues to expenses.
Our sixteen-seventeen actual, we actually went down by ten grand.
Mm-hmm.
So we moved a part-timer out of the sewer fund and put the part-timer in the water.
Yeah, if not, if it was where it was, you'd be in the red. So these are, these are things to look at. You you also have in here the the fifty cent rate increase, which we haven't approved, effective five-one-ET?
Uh, no, I took that out.
You left that out?
That's out.
Okay.
Instead, you have a utility tax coming in there.
Yeah. Which?
Which is coming out of the debt fund, a portion of it, not all of it.
Yeah. So i- it's. Some of the things that drive me. So when you look at three-nine-three, you'll see it, and and before, we've never taken revenue from sewer debt, which is utility tax, it's pledged for sewer debt, the utility tax. Um, that's been taken, and and you'll see it increasing, especially over, like Bob said, in nineteen-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. These are, these are things that are gonna be needed to cover the increased expenses. Where you're showing them.
Starting in nineteen-twenty.
Nineteen-twenty and increasing. It's just, these these funds are, they need to be looked at and at budget time, we'll talk a lot more about it, but I want people to see, for the rest of this board to see on a five-year plan, what we're taking and putting in there as revenue, or not were. Just, I don't necessarily agree with this, but, um, I think there's other ways to reduce expenditures to not need to increase revenues.
Basically, we want to throw office staff into the general fund, is that correct?
Correct.
In order to do that and not raise revenue, government make cuts in the general fund to make that happen. We have to go through the general fund and make cuts.
Well, that's.
March fifth, to see if we can accomplish putting an office person into the general fund.
And that's, these are all things that we'll need to discuss at budget time. But it's good to get a a picture of this five-year and look and see what we're doing, because.
Without the five-year plan, you wouldn't see that.
Huh?
Without the five-year plan, you wouldn't see that trend, you wouldn't see that coming.
No, I, you're right, yeah. But, I mean, the fact of the matter is, is we've been doing this, and I've been on the boards for six years. And last year was the first time we started seeing sewer fund projecting five years down the road into the red. So as chairman of that committee, makes me go, okay, hmm, why? So when you look at it, and then you really start to think about the fact that the sewer fund is funding two office staff that don't have anything to do with the sewer fund, then yes, then you start to go, okay, well, do you really need to increase revenue to get this to balance if you put these expenditures where they belong?
Hmm, correct me if I'm wrong, but did we not discuss the potential of a tax that we're collecting in this fund that doesn't necessarily need to go to this fund that can be put back in general to possibly accommodate this?
No, that's, it's, it's.
That's the utility tax.
It's the utility tax, but that's actually, that's actually been pledged to water and sewer debt, which is Fund Fifty-four. So.
So when staff that's in that fund, has that fund been budgeted based on having that staff in it?
Absolutely.
So the amount that's budgeted for that should be removed from that and put in general?
Yes, but in order to do that, we gotta make cuts in general of equal numbers.
No, but I mean, the amount that's budgeted into this fund that was meant for for paying for staff.
The utility tax I'm moving over doesn't even cover that one staff person, not yet. And until we have a signed loan agreement and the project is done on the sewer plan, we have no idea where our debt payments are going to be.
Yeah, come nineteen.
You don't know.
Come fiscal year nineteen-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, you'll start to get close to one.
Could be high, could be low. Depends on how that project goes. The lower the debt payment, the more money we get to move over to general from the utility tax to pay for that person.
I do recall back in the day, people used to get bounced from fund to fund on a regular basis.
And that was stopped in two thousand and ten. This board by resolution locked, said, dude, you can't move people around anymore, they stay where they're at. Now this board can change that.
And and that's where I, that's where I have a problem when I I sit there and the committee was faced with, okay, and and this is a short-term plug to make numbers work, five years down the road. Okay, but you'll see up there that we had to take it out, it was a fifty cent rate increase for sewer fund, to create more revenue, to cover the expenditures. And my argument was, why should we pay more, increase rates on the sewer rate to cover salaries of office staff that don't belong in the sewer fund? I understand what was done was done whatever years ago, and it it made the numbers work, but at some point, we got it. I I think you need more true accounting where if if it's office staff, in administration, it belongs in administration. It doesn't belong in the sewer fund or in the water fund.
Yeah, no, and I understand that, and maybe you didn't understand what I was saying. So when you're basing your numbers in those funds every year when you do your budget, you're basing them based on having those bodies in that fund. If those bodies aren't in there, the amount that you're budgeting for those bodies should move to where those bodies are.
So we would move sewer revenue to the general fund?
Yeah, and I don't even know if you can do that, but I'm just saying, if you're budgeting X amount of money for these employees, and you always have been, why would you stop budgeting them? You know what I mean? You've always been budgeting for them, maybe it was in the wrong fund.
But the revenue from those salaries are coming from water, not from somewhere else.
The salaries for the, water and sewer is funding.
I under, I understand.
Yeah, so yeah, you wouldn't move that money.
I think we all know that, yeah. What she's saying is you got seven hundred thousand dollars, well, two of them employees are in there, so that comes out with their salaries, but, yeah.
And it has been implied that to rectify this, we are thinking, or the thinking is, is that we wanna cut staff that is in the correct. We'd like to budget and fix the books in a way to where they're in the correct fund, but they are still on our payroll. We don't wanna cut anyone, we just want to fix the numbers, so.
And I get it, I think, yeah, everybody should be, you know, if it's being done accurately, everybody should be where they're supposed to be. I know history makes it a little difficult to kind of just.
Jonathan is right, water and sewer revenue are being used to pay office staff in the village hall.
Yes.
How do you fix that?
It's not easy.
Because if you move them to the general fund, which gives Jonathan more water and sewer revenue allocation to put to his operations, you have to cut that general fund by that same amount. You know? And that's what we have to do, or you find a new revenue source. Is that simple?
So, I mean, those are the two, I just wanted to cover my funds. I mean, we covered them in our committee meeting, we went over this long and hard, but it hasn't come before the entire board, so. I mean, we're watching it and see what comes of it. Once we have the final numbers from the I E P A on the loan payment, we we know where they should be, but until we sign that loan agreement and have the final numbers, you can plug that in, and then you can use your utility tax to cover your sewer debt payments, you know what, your sewer debt payments are gonna be for the next twenty years, and you can actually sit there and go, okay, now it's time to, now it's time to calculate it and see what we can move into the right spots.
John, it might be another two fiscal years yet before we know that exact number, because like with Penfield Water Main, we signed a loan for one point three, and we only used nine hundred on it. So we have to wait till the project's done and see where we're at.
Yeah, but it can only get better. Once you, once you sign that loan agreement, it's not gonna get any worse. Can you comment on our budget?
Yeah.
Possibly, where that number could get a little better, where your loan payment will be less, but your loan payment will not increase. So once we sign that loan agreement, we can actually sit there and look at it and see what's needed and possibly reduce the revenue, but.
You're still up.
Hmm?
Next item, you're still up.
Do we need a motion then?
Do we need a resolution?
You can go on tonight or wait till next meeting.
What do you want to do?
It's your choice.
My other suggestion, my opinion is, you probably discussed this, and if you wanna take it off the agenda for the resolution, it's not, or if you feel you wanna wait this time.
Fine, I just wanted the rest of the board to to know what, I mean, because we we addressed this in a, in a committee meeting with the five-year budget, so I just wanted the rest of the board to know, because typically the five-year budget, we kind of go through it.
And you did talk about a strategic plan session.
Yeah, but, I mean, we didn't go through this at all in a board meeting, so.
All right, um, resolution number?
Twenty eighteen dash oh-two.
Twenty eighteen dash oh-two. Uh, consider a a resolution number twenty eighteen oh-two, adopt the five-year fiscal plan for the Village of Beecher for twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any questions in Washington? Brokow?
Wayman?
Yes.
Cuthbert?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Crouse?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Nyer.
All right, consider, consider an engineering services agreement with Backstrom Women in the Mount not to exceed thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for designing and bidding, and thirty-three thousand one hundred dollars for construction observation for the replacement of the Dunbar wa, uh, Street water main. Um, like I said, we we took it off last month, we sat down, met with Ray. Um, I expressed some disappointment, um, I think that's kind of putting it nicely, um, with the way this project first came about, um, in looking at percentages that were figured and, um, dollars per foot that were figured and everything. Um, they came back to us, uh, with these numbers, with, um, Penfield Project at, uh, three hundred and, three hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred dollars, um, with the engineering, um, bringing in the total cost. The engineering at the numbers that I I stated before, thirty thousand nine twenty-five for design and bidding, and thirty-three thousand one hundred for construction. Um, for a total project cost of four fifty-eight, uh, eight twenty-five as an estimate. Um, the original estimates, if everyone recalls, was four seventy-five, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the cost and the engineering at seventy-four thousand, so the cost of the engineering came down ten thousand dollars. Um, and their engineer estimate on the construction then came down about eighty thousand. Um, I still think these numbers on the engineer estimate are high. Um, some of the things that I think kind of triggered all this is when they use percentages, they use percentages when they explain that their their cost of engineering, their cost of the design of the project was X percentage of the, uh, engineer estimate cost of construction. So my big question was, as, once we pointed out the fact that these numbers are way too high on the, uh, engineer estimate of construction, why didn't the percentage reflect that in the cost of their design and in their cost of observation? So they worked with us a little bit, I still think the numbers are high, I still think they're gonna come in lower. Um, but know that if we move forward with this project, this ties our hands again, like I said, when I pointed out in that five-year, to see what we're bringing in annually for, um, water main replacement. A lot of that money's gonna be tied to Penfield though, which isn't gonna leave much. We do this, which is a big problem, because we got service lines that need to be addressed here, and it's best to just take care of it all and do the main with the service lines. Um, we're not gonna be doing any projects of water mains for two years. And this, I know I brought it up a few months ago, um, about how aggressive we wanna be in changing all our mains from old to new plastic, and how long of a process we want that to take. So I guess my question is to the rest of the board, are you comfortable with tying up this for two years? Or is the board willing to consider, um? Or is the board willing to consider increasing the water main replacement? Portion of the bill. Now mind you, that has nothing to do with what I was talking about with the water fund and that. If that were increased, it would go, if there was an increase in the water bill for water main replacement, it would go directly into the water main replacement fund and would not be used for the operations or maintenance of the water fund and the expenditures. It would strictly be for water main replacement. So it would not be covering any salaries. It would not be covering any chemical costs or any clamps or any new hydrants or anything like that. It would strictly go into the water main replacement.
How many old water mains do we have left?
At the rate we're going, I think the anticipated or the estimated length would be about twenty-five to thirty years to switch to plastic without any increases.
Bobby has a number on that one.
It's about right.
About two-thirds.
Right now, we're about two-thirds cast iron, one-third plastic. Is that correct? Fortunately, all the new parts of town are plastic. We have not had a water main break yet on a plastic pipe that was not man-made. That was not man-made. We had them where guys ripped services out of the main, but as far as a free stall break or a, you know, we haven't had. And I think that's because of the material. Plastic is much more forgiving than cast iron. But again, the court of public opinion is still out because this plastic was a new technology in ninety when we started. So we are the tip of the spear when it comes to being the user of plastic main. There are some towns not too far from here that don't allow plastic, indoor systems. They still use ducted iron because that's the old way of doing things, you know? And in nineteen ninety, we made that switch to plastic because of the breaks and the water quality. You get a lot of rusty water with iron pipes. And the plastic doesn't generate more rust. So it was a good decision then and thirty years from that date, I'd still say it was a good decision. You know, now how quick can you get to plastic? Like John's saying, at our rate, we're going to be twenty-five to thirty years.
And my thinking on this is, one, it's got to be a complete board decision. I think everybody has to be on board with this, right? And it's just a matter of how aggressive do we want to be? If the rest of the board, I'm not going to make this decision for the whole board, okay? If the rest of the board wants to slam the throttle down and giddy up and go, I'll follow that direction and we'll move in that way. The rest of the board is saying, whoa, you know, pull back, slow it down? I'll do that too, but it's, I need some direction from the board as far as what we want to do. Because I don't think we want to necessarily go through with this project absolutely right now if we're not willing to, in a year or two, look and seriously look at that and make some decisions. So, I mean, do I think if we did a dollar per thousand in a year or so and then you look at doing another one in four or five years after that and possibly one more four or five after that, you could probably have it done in half the time? Or you could probably take twenty-five to thirty and not get to ten to fifteen.
Why are we looking at Denver?
Bobby, you want to explain that one?
I can tell you this, the feds, since Flint, Michigan, with the lead and copper ruling that came out, you have like ninety percent lead service lines that we are, we have been dictated by the feds and Illinois State EPA that we have to remove them from our main and then notify the customers. We got till November of this year to develop a plan, give it to them and... That's one reason. The other reason is they're all blocking up. It's a hundred-year-old main over there and people's services are dropping below probably about twenty-eight pounds of pressure, which is nothing. Now, if we went and looked at, we got prices for how much it would cost just to replace the service lines to those houses.
Because we had to do one.
Because we, yeah, to do one and then there was like thirty-something houses there. Well, to do them all, it wasn't that much more money than to just rip out the main and do it all at once.
Which is my point. I think we're missing that point. We started this project because we're having a problem on Dunbar.
Yes.
Not necessarily just to start replacing water main. So it's almost a, it's solving a problem on Dunbar, not necessarily just replacing water main. And I think that's the point.
Our original plan was to do Gould Street, but we shifted it to Dunbar because of the service lines that are blocking them.
Right, and I think that's most important is we're solving a problem. We're not just replacing water mains. There's an issue there that needs to be fixed, just like Maxwell. Just like Maxwell.
This problem's only going to grow. I mean, it's just, like I said, it's just a matter of how aggressive do we want to be? Do we want to...
And like I said, just like that, we have to solve a problem. We have a choice. Yeah, we could let it fester and then one of these days we're going to say, oh crap, we should have done.
But we are a lot further now than we were three years ago. You know what I mean? You pat yourself on the back.
Yeah, this whole board. I mean, when we made that decision we made, there's money in there right now to do this project, which is, you know, I mean, at the projections, almost a half million dollars. There's money in there to do this project right now. That wouldn't have been there and we wouldn't be in this position if we didn't do what we did, was it two years ago, three years ago? And add to that water main replacement fund and take that dollar and put it there to begin with. So, I mean, thankful we did what we did, but do we want to, I don't know. What's the rest of the board think? I mean, I've put it out there.
How many other one-hundred-year-old water mains do we have? A lot?
Well, we're addressing those mains that are probably more or least expensive to repair. The real ticking time bomb that we have is the main on Indiana Avenue between Dixie and Gould. That sucker has to be replaced at some point in time. It's underneath a concrete swell and that thing is going to cost you. Now, we just bought a tool that's able to break up the concrete swell and make repairs, but that's probably our oldest main in town right now. Since we replaced, Penfield replaced about one. Indiana's probably the next oldest that a hundred, it was put in nineteen oh two. That's when that pipe was put in. So far, we've been pretty lucky with that section of pipe, but it's getting older. And the other problem they did when they built that is they welded the joints. So we have directly on the Indiana Avenue, a four-way connection welded. So in order to make the repair to the pipe, you've got to shut four streets down because all four streets are hot. Is that correct, Bobby?
Yes, Maxwell and Ward.
Maxwell, we avoided that one. Put in the Maxwell main because we didn't want anything to do with that four-way connection. But that is a time bomb. If that thing were to bust, it would be a nightmare.
Didn't we have a water main break down on Indiana?
We've had water main breaks on Indiana, but not at those four-way connections. Yeah.
I thought last year we did it.
And I think we have, we've identified two of those four ways in that, right, Bobby?
Yes.
I mean, that one with the county being involved, that one's going to cost you. Make Penfield Street look like a picnic.
Yeah, and like Trusty Missouri just said too, I mean, the idea of the way we go about it with it in the water main replacement fund, as you complete this project, there's no need for that. You can peel away. Once you have it in a water rate, which is the way it was done before with thirty cents or something that was dedicated to water main replacement, once it's in the water rate, it's in the water rate. The way this is set up after the way we set it up three years ago, if you add to that amount as you replace main and it's done and you have the town to plastic, you can take that away. And take it off. But, I don't know, what is...
So it doesn't necessarily have to be a permanent increase, but an increase to get the village up to par? And then once these jobs are done?
So thirty years from now?
Yeah.
Well, no, thirty years from now, if we don't, thirty years from now, if we do nothing.
That's if we do nothing. It's thirty years from now. But we do have the ability to take that charge away at some point. It's strictly for repairs.
I think you're much better off doing larger projects because you piecemeal these projects. You get eaten up on mobilization costs and things like that. For economies of scale, you're better off doing several blocks at a time to do it a little project.
And that, so, I mean, me and Bobby have discussed this at like, if you were to do a dollar now and you were to do... And there's no telling what rates will be at in five years down the road. If the board were willing to do a dollar next year or mid-year or something like that and be willing to do another dollar four years down the road or five years down the road, would the revenue that that generate be enough to cover a loan payment where you could come in and do all of it at once? And tie it to ten years where then you go, okay, we got that loan payment for ten years. Once that loan is done, we wipe the water main replacement fee off the water bills, you know, down to fifty cents. You know, there's a multitude of options, but I mean, if, I don't know, go around. What are your thoughts?
We know most of the rates are going to be a five-year either with the loans.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you don't know, but at this rate, we know what we're bringing in and what we're able to do is... If the board were to consider another, once you do that dollar, you're looking at close to two hundred thousand dollars a year that that would generate to be able to do a project every year.
So are you asking for then approval as far as doing this project plus doing a rate increase?
What I would do tonight is I'm not-
What are we doing?
I'm not making a motion to do this project unless I, you know, we go around the boardroom and everybody's kind of in consensus saying, yeah, I see where we're at with this and it's something we need to address and then in a year, you know, that we can move forward with possibly that in the future.
Any type of discussion except for what is on the agenda can't be approved tonight anyways, but I think his point is, is if you do this and you want to move forward, you may have to make that as part two down the road. But again, I made the point earlier that this discussion actually started because there is a problem on Dunbar and it has to do with the service lines. To me, that's what we should address tonight. The other part is a second part of the problem, which still has to be discussed and decided down the road, which he's saying the funds have to be there. You have one problem tonight, that's the contract before you do Dunbar to fix a problem that he's identified. That's what started this discussion.
Now Bobby, you had mentioned big projects versus small projects. What is this project?
This one's pretty good. This is two and a half blocks. It's a decent size. It's when you do a little one like Maxwell Street, you know, we only did a couple hundred feet there.
Or what was the other street we did?
Burchnell. We piled it into Penfield.
Well, or before that, we did the other Birch, right? We did Burchnell and Penfield. What was the other one we did?
We did Elm Street and House. And then we did a little bit coming from on Oak Park and Indiana Avenue.
Where we've done Oak Park in the past where we did like one little block at a time from Penfield to Indiana.
And I, Scott, we might be the only one who remembers this, but we have replaced mains in the past because we were able to get grants funded because our income levels, who's C D G, were low enough. They're not anymore. We did Meadow, Orchard, Tournament, all the streets we did. Country, yes, the country was done. But the piece at Catalpa should be replaced. And the Dixie Highway on the west side should be cut off and shoot those people onto the east side and put them on the plastic pipe, the ten-inch plastic that's on the east side. We never finished those jobs. They kind of, we patched what we could. But those were good projects. I mean, we used to have a lot of water main breaks on Orchard. Man, man. We'd average ten a year there, remember Bobby?
Yeah, but it wasn't that deep.
Yeah. So we have replaced main. It's just that we don't have grant opportunities now like we did back then because before the town grew, we had a low enough per capita income to qualify. We don't qualify. And what you're looking for, John, is just a consensus on what to do about the rates if you approve this project?
But I think that's something in the future.
See, it's two separate things. Point's well taken, but again, tonight, you have a contract before you to fix Dunbar. Dunbar has a problem. Are you going to fix it? Then you need to have discussion about the rates.
Well, the thing is, we're kind of, we're kind of racing, we're kind of racing this. Could it wait till after the start of the next fiscal year and probably be a little bit easier? Yeah. But...
It's meat table. But again, my understanding is, is you're going to end up fixing something you may end up paying for it anyways. So this, in other words, are we going to do the Band-Aid approach or are we going to fix it? That's the way I understood it.
So if we're racing it, why are we racing it?
Because every time we replace a service out there, it's costing us five Gs. So by the time we make a decision to pull the trigger on this project, we already have services.
Yeah, you could have ten repairs.
Yeah, that's the risk you take.
Yeah, we've repaired two and I know there's four of them right now that are in, let's say, dire straits. They're not along to the point where it's an issue that we got to go in there and rip it out today, but it's getting close.
When Bobby presented this to the committee, we were fully committed to doing Gould Street in front of the business district. I mean, we were committed to doing that. When he brought the facts forward, that's when we got concerned and said maybe Dunbar should be done. It's a gamble.
So this is kind of an instead of then? You'd be doing this instead?
But to John's point, he may have to do Gould Street for two more years because he has to discuss the rates, which is like, again, if there's a problem on Dunbar and so other than that, you want to wait? Gamble, Band-Aid it, whatever the case may be. This is the fix.
Okay, so my consensus, or my opinion, I don't have a problem with doing this project. As far as the increase, I actually want to go through the budget process. I'm not saying I wouldn't go for it. I, you know, I'd probably be fine with it if we have to fix water mains or if we have to replace them, we have to replace them. But we have some things to do with our budget too that I want to look at when we're done as far as, you know, I don't want to commit to a rate increase right now. Would I be against it? Probably not. If we have to do the mains, we got to do the mains.
Ditto.
Was it really me?
I am.
I mean, no, it's pretty clear. If we do this, if we do this project and approve it, then if we want to do other ones, we need to find a revenue source. I think that's his point that he set up. And that's what I'm saying, but I understand that. I'm Scott.
I think we should move forward with Dunbar.
Please.
I'm going to abstain from this discussion as I do live on Dunbar.
So would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion entering an Indian Engineering Services Agreement with Beckstrom Women in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for designing bidding and thirty-three thousand one hundred dollars for construction observation for the replacement of the Dunbar Street water main.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions or motion?
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Resort?
Abstain.
Kraus? Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. And like Trusty Capores is saying, there needs to be further discussion on the rates, which probably the budget plan will be the worst candidate.
You still have another choice. You could keep bids and reject them too at that point. We have another opportunity to say, yeah, your name at that point, although you're spending thirty grand.
Okay, to try and be brief, basically, we solicited sixteen bids for fuel at that time of year. We only received one bid back, which was Heritage F S. Heritage F S is basically saying, go with the open rack right now at ten cents over the old rack price. The explanation given is the fuel, nobody is buying fuel right now in the market. It's very volatile and they're suggesting do not lock in the price at this time, but it could get better and it could get worse. They did bid a fixed price, which I'll let Bobby explain that. But if in fact, we do agree to the bid on the open market, which again, it's what is being recommended, there is a second part of the motion, which would be asked to give the fuel committee to be able to lock in if in fact, things get better, things get worse and we see a trend coming up.
Yeah, there was a guy from F S that was at the meeting and he said that it doesn't matter F S, which way you go, they make a dime a gallon or they... and he said that it doesn't matter FS which way you go, they make a dime a gallon whether you take the flat bid or the variable bid. But he said, I would take the variable bid because the price of fuel is high right now. Usually in the winter time is your low point. For some reason this year, with the way the economy is heated up, price of fuel is high. Uh, the futures market is high, but all the experts are saying it's going to go down. So he doesn't want us to lock in any more than we have to. So the variable price based on the low rack would be two dollars and nineteen cents, two point one nine point four cents per gallon for unleaded and two point five five four cents per gallon for diesel. That was on the day we opened the bids. I have no idea where they are today because the price goes up and down every week. And Jerry and Donna have to adjust the billing and the pump of the per gallon rate every week when the loads come in. But on that day, just for comparison purposes, uh, and again, this is a Casey's price and we will probably get another nineteen cents off of that for taxes. But they were two fifty-four-nine for unleaded and two eighty-nine-nine for diesel. So you're saving about thirty cents a gallon in total with buying it on the lower rack versus buying it at a retail pump after you take the taxes off.
And then we, just for further discussion, Donna, I and Bob and everybody else in God's name, probably were trying to figure out a way of trying to track the market price ourselves rather than taking anybody else's advice. And basically it was gas money and it was, go ahead.
There's a annual fee to be part of the opus and I want to say it was two thousand dollars.
It was very two thousand.
I mean, it was just.
Not worth it.
No, we wouldn't be able to justify that at all. So there's, other than, you know, checking Casey's or, which isn't, isn't really the greatest option, but it is an option, just marking down their prices. Um, it's really our only way of tracking.
But I mean, you're saying we're going to forego, we're not going to gamble now to gamble later, basically what you're saying? Because I mean, you're asking for two different things. One, to do the variable now. And then if you see the prices move, to lock it in, the prices are going to, so what are you looking for to lock it in later?
Go on the open market now at ten cents over rack and then give the Intergovernmental Fuel Committee in order to lock it in the event that the prices drop considerably. Or if we see a trend that they're going to go up considerably, they'll be locking in.
So they would call a special meeting of the Intergovernmental Fuel Committee. Heritage FS would make its arguments as to why we should go to fix price for the remainder of the calendar year. We would never go beyond the twelve-month period because we want to bid in February because typically that's the best time to bid.
There's an anomaly right now, I guess you could say.
Yeah. We might be on variable pricing the whole year. That's very possible.
Any other questions?
Only one person got back to us out of sixteen we sent out.
Say that.
Said only one person got back to us out of sixteen we sent out.
Yeah, to be honest with you, that's not, kind of that, not with that, it's not that kind of the ordinary. In the past, they've solicited sixteen bids and sometimes we only get two or three. And some, some of the, the, uh, the gas companies will not bid both ways. They'll only bid on open market. They won't bid fixed, which is fine. We'll accept that bid as well.
So is this, and just because I haven't done this before, I mean, where do we get these sixteen from? Is this just our vendors from the past or are we advertising whoever responds?
We advertise and we also mail the bid notice to each of those vendors in the process. So they're worried if they get the bid for nothing, how do you still outmail back?
I just wonder where the sixteen.
The problem, the, the, the problem, the reason is, is FS is the closest, so their transportation costs are low. Because they're putting out a P S home, well, rather than, they wanted to bid one here. And they were hauling a Highland, I think it was. And it just didn't work for them at the end of the year. They just, they lost their buck. So they just come back.
Yeah, they didn't even bid on this. Were they on that sixteen goal?
Yeah, I think they were. The list is in here.
Yeah, I didn't see rather than I.
Um, it might be Mansfield.
Mansfield? Mansfield oil. I knew they were something else.
Yeah.
But these are all the ones in the area that deliver fuel.
What do you need? A motion?
Motion to prove the ten cents over rack opus.
I'll make it. Make a motion to consider the ten cents over rack opus.
With Heritage FS.
With Heritage FS.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any questions? Motion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Kapros?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
No, it also has for a motion authorizing the Intergovernmental Fuel Committee to lock in pricing for the remainder of the fuel term with Heritage FS at any amount below the low bid for flat pricing.
So.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions? That motion.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Kapros?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a need to discuss distribution plan?
So, so just to be clear of that, I'm sorry. Um, so that's basically the, what the low bid came in here on the lock pricing. That's what you're saying is if it gets below that.
We would never award a bid higher than that number.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll stay on variable because that was the low bid. I think it'd be, someone could say, oh, you're collusion.
Well, I mean, is there, is there, I mean, just, for discussion, I know we're, I mean, is there like a, I mean, there, there like a percentage or a number like, okay, we, we, we'd rather, you know, that, that you guys talked about in the, in the meeting, like, okay, maybe ten cents below what this, this is? Or is it a quarter below? Is it five cents? Is it, you know?
Actually, the, the biggest dog in the room kind of liked the flat pricing, even though it's a little more. At least they know how to budget because their fuel is a huge amount. And we said, ah, the variable is probably better. I would say it's probably a dime below that number.
I would say it's more as trend.
Yeah.
The trend, if the trend looks like it's going to go down, go down, go down, and then, then we're comfortable in how far it's going to go down. That's it. Then we'll lock it in. The trend, I, I can't say that honestly, we're never going to lock in higher than this because if the trend starts going up and up and up, we say, wait a minute, we don't want to go up anymore. You know what I mean? So it's possible.
It's, with the motion, it's not possible over the fixed bid that he made. You can't lock it in for over that fixed. Yes.
Kind of, that's kind of what I asked.
But here, here's, here's what could happen with fuel though. The fixed price could be lower than the variable price we're paying because you're buying gas six months out and it's going to be a lot cheaper then. And that's when we'll lock in. If we can buy gas for a price cheaper than what we're currently paying on a variable rate, that's when we'll lock it in. Right now, there's about a thirty cent difference. Fixed price is higher than the verb.
If I may for discussion sake, because I think he just raised a very good point. Gas starts going up and up and up, we can't lock. I think that's your point. The idea was to be able to give the Intergovernmental.
You have, you have a thirty cent cushion.
Well, what I'm saying is, based on that motion, it says at any amount below the low bid. So if they come in, if you start seeing things trending up and they come in and they say, look, you had an option at fifty-four. We did this, but now things are rocketing. I can get you in at sixty, two sixty, you can't based on that motion.
You could amend it if you want. I was just concerned that, I don't think the committee would have the authority to lock in a price lower than what he bid for fixed pricing or higher than what he bid for fixed.
How long is that bid good for?
This was a twelve-month bid.
So that's good for twelve months, but if you don't accept it, it's not good for anything. Is there an expiration on it?
No. Oh, it expires, yes.
Yeah, so that, that, that's, that's gone. But based on what we just did is we just gave the Joint Fuel Committee authorization to lock in at any.
Price below this.
Any price below that. But now that that's gone, if things start going up, you can't lock in if it's a dime higher and you see it going higher.
If you're willing to let the, give the committee that authority, make the amended motion, John, that's fine with me.
I don't think that's my intent. My intent would be watch out.
Yeah, amend the motion. Allow the Intergovernmental Fuel to lock in a price at any rate if something happens.
Agree with you, amend the motion.
Yeah, that's not what that says here.
I know that. I know, I understand that. My intent was to do exactly what John was pointing out. To have the Fuel Committee to have the authority to lock in a price. If it goes way down or if it goes way up, then we're going to protect our investment. That's the intent.
Right now, you're pushing, you want to hit it at the start of the up, you ought to be able to hit it at the start of the uptrend.
Yeah, if in fact you see the trend doing it, yes.
Yes.
And who seconded it?
Second.
Did you agree to amend?
Could you clarify what you said?
Yeah, consider a motion authorizing the Intergovernmental Fuel Committee to lock in pricing for the main over the full term with Heritage FS at any amount below or above.
No ceiling.
No ceiling.
Original motion, I see.
I would just leave it at the remainder of the full term with Heritage FS period.
The grinning guy that doesn't hear.
Yeah, but they both could get it.
Do another little call vote.
Okay. Bagel?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Kapros?
Yes.
Waylon?
Thank you. We need to discuss distribution plan tonight.
I just have one question. Just under the eleventh policy for the police department direction, are hire another officer for the day shift? Was that determined that it was just going to be day shift? Or will our current evening officers have the opportunity to possibly move to day shift and then you hire would go to the night shift?
That's controlled by the CBA. Uh, we don't dictate who gets what shift the CBA does.
You're asking, will we bid on seniority?
In a sense, just giving them the opportunity.
Not just whoever gets hired automatically goes to day shift.
Yeah, just giving everybody a fair and equal opportunity.
Yeah, that's in the CBA.
District plan, chief of police, where that officer goes and says, oh, to the chief of police and the CBA. Do you have any other discussion? Do you want to vote on that tonight or do you want to wait till the twenty-sixth?
I can't even look at all my computer and it works though.
I can, we'll break it up on the twenty-sixth. Okay, I would ask the, I had a motion to go into executive session to discuss an appointed contract for the chief of police.
I'd make a motion to go in the executive session.
Can you finish that? When we come out of that executive session, I would, like, we could possibly ask for a motion approving the contract and then a motion appointing the candidate as the chief of police effective March first.
I'll make a motion to go in that executive session to discuss, um, in the terms and conditions for hiring the chief of police.
Second.
There is a second. Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Kapros?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.